Set the planning board meeting dates. Oh, I'm sorry. Flag. Please rise to pledge allegiance. It's been a while. Exactly. Are we all set to go?
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first order of business is to set the planning board meeting dates for 2020 as indicated in the schedule that is submitted for the minutes. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Blaney. Second by Robin. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We have six yes, one absent. And the second order of business is to appoint a secretary, which I believe we have one name and nomination.
I second it.
At no additional compensation, I mean.
This is the joy of giving.
Keeping with tradition.
Yeah, that's a surprise.
So we have a motion to, I'll make the motion to appoint Phil as our secretary. We have a second by Mrs. Zuccarelli. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations.
I mean, Phil, what would we do without you getting on these computers?
Yes, I know. As I'm looking at it.
My agenda didn't go through, so I don't think we have a work session today. So Anthony, are you going to jump in?
Yeah.
Regularly?
Go a few things.
Okay, great.
The first one is number five, Pecanic Padler. Everybody knows the site from Riverside. We actually deem the application complete and waive the public hearing. It turns out we have to have a public hearing. This involves a wetlands permit also. And if you don't meet the wetland setbacks, which we don't in this case, you have to have a hearing. So I'm recommending that we schedule the public hearing for Pecanic Padler for February 13th.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Phil, second by Zuccarelli. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We have six yes. Is it printed? Are you going in order?
Yeah, number seven.
Number seven, George Hastings.
So this is a property located in Old Riverhead Road, Hampton Bays. It involves a three lot subdivision. I attached the map for you. This board issued a pre-app report on January 26, 2017. Has since expired. My understanding is the applicant is stuck in the health department, which seems to be the issue these days. So they were looking for a waiver of the pre-application policy so that would reauthorize the pre-application report until January 26 of 2021. My only recommendation would be that if you're going to do that, that we have a final hearing on this application, even though it's been a number of years.
Okay. Now, Phil, away from submitting the file.
Just might correct one thing. We were stuck in the health department. We did receive health department approval recently. So, but that's what's taken so long. So we will try to put everything together to get a final. But we realized this has expired, so that would prevent us from submitting the file.
Phil, they'll be ready to spin.
So our action is to reauthorize a pre-app for two years.
Yeah, well, to 2021, January 26, 2021.
January 20, 2021.
Just a year.
One year. Very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Phil, second by Zuccarelli. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Six yes, one absent. Pass him down. Number nine.
Yep, number nine is the property on Main Street in Eastport. That's in the R20 zoning district. This was a two lot plan that involved maintaining the existing residence on one lot. And then the back lot, which would take access from Ketchum Avenue. The applicant has agreed to make that an affordable housing lot. So it's a two lot subdivision with creation of one new lot, and that lot would be for affordable housing. I know the applicant's been in contact with Diana Weir. I've been working with her. So we had a hearing on this and we're here today for the pre-application report. I handed out a copy. I also sent it to you guys.
Oh, yeah, this is, there's a paint body shop?
That's right. Right adjacent to it, there's a water repair.
Oh, yeah, sorry, ma'am, but that's a public hearing.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
So on page two is a report where it says conformance with zoning. I've indicated what relief this project will require. It does require relief from the zoning board of appeals. This was a type two action, so no further environmental review. Under the park requirement, you only pay a park fee for the new lots that you're creating, except no fees are applicable for the affordable lots. So there would be no park fee required for this project. Public comments. We did get public comments at the hearing. Probably about five or six people. They were generally not supportive of the project. And they find that Ketchum Avenue is already overburdened with traffic. In terms of the Long Island Workforce Housing Act, this is an affordable housing development, so it's not really applicable. We did our referrals to town engineer on page two and three. Just had some basic mapping requirements that need to be addressed, but nothing too out of the ordinary. The Department of Public Works came back with a couple of standard requirements for ADA compliant driveways and so forth. Southampton Town Office of Fire Prevention didn't have any concerns and put in their comments regarding street addresses. Southampton Landmarks and Historic Board, they said there does not appear to be any significance with respect to historic resources. They would be concerned about the existing residence if it was going to be demolished. But given its age, any activity that takes place with that property would be referred to the Landmarks Board at the time of a building permit application. So they will get to see it again if anything's going to happen there. So my recommendations, one, that this report would satisfy or would act as the report to the zoning board of appeals should the applicant decide to move forward with that. Two, I said the planning board supports this project in light of the fact that the resulting lot would be made available for affordable housing.
Anthony, is he proposing to encumber the lot? And, you know, a lot of people come and say, well, this lot will be affordable. But does he understand this?
Yes, this would be through the town's program.
He would, okay.
Yes.
And they're willing to voluntarily do that?
That's so far what's been presented to us. They sat down, but they met with, like I said, Diana Weir, Kyle, before they came, you know, to the planning board, so.
I recall him saying that at the meeting.
A lot of times people say it's going to be an affordable lot just by virtue of the market.
Yeah, you know, they've been advised by me, Dennis. I let them know what affordable means. You know, the numbers are set and they're aware, so.
It's a restriction on the D.
And I think that, you know, should that, it is. Should they decide that they want to change, well, that would change the nature of the application. I think we'd have to relook at things a little bit if they decided not to, so. Do you have any, anything you want to add?
It's only two lots. I don't know really what would change. In other words, at the 11th tower, they might say we're not really going forward.
But if it's part of our review and we say that we approve this because of the affordable.
Well, are we doing anything different that, in other words, is this map, and I don't have the map in front of me, would this, how would this map change if at the 11th tower they said, we really don't?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think the map would change. The map itself wouldn't change. I think that the arguments for trying to get relief are different. If you're, you know what I mean? If you're proposing affordable versus not proposing affordable.
There would be a parking.
Yes, and there would be a parking.
There would be a parking.
You know, I had said in here that the planning board supports this project in light of the fact the resulting lot would be made available for affordable housing, which is consistent with town's goal of addressing its affordable housing needs. We, you know, could put in there, Dennis, you know, something to the point that it'd be part of the town's program, it'd be subject to a, you know, covenant. You know, put something in there. At least we're acknowledging that.
Because the ZBA might, this one's existing.
Yeah, let me add that in there, right at the beginning there.
If we're talking about an affordable parcel within a development, that should, I think, be standard operating procedure, that it becomes a covenant.
Yeah, and it is.
Because you're looking at the application with that in mind, and you might look at it differently, which I think we're, Dennis, let's go.
Sure. We'll add that in for sure. So that's good. The third comment regarding the town's high priority water quality improvement zones, the new lot will be subject to the innovative alternative wastewater treatment system. Number four, compliance with the town engineer requirements. Number five, compliance with the town office of public safety regarding property addresses. The final map shall contain the following revisions. Label the lots as lots one and two. The final map should be titled Final Map for the Subdivision of Zappella Property. That should include all the technical mapping requirements. I did say that they should add a note that Lot Two will be subject to the town's affordable housing provisions pursuant to Chapter 216 of the Southampton Town Code. The postal delivery house numbers have to be shown. F does a notation that covenants would be filed that affect all or some of the lots on the map. A notation that the maps comply with the town zoning requirements except as modified by the zoning board of appeals. And a note that the plot has been approved by the planning board of the town of Southampton, along with the signature line. They will need health department approval, and that was it.
Anthony?
Yeah?
I'm just curious. There will be two houses on that lot, but not affordable. Is there any conditions that is in the law that describes the type of house under the Affordable Act that must be put there?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Because I'm just, I mean, if someone has, and not in this case, but generally speaking, let's say they have, they're putting a 3,000 square foot house on one lot. Knowing that the next one is affordable, they may come along and put a 1,200 square foot. Is there anything that controls that action?
I'm not sure I understand your question as it relates to the 3,000. There's an existing house on Lot One, and there'll be another house constructed in Lot Two.
If they go substantially lower in square footage, a much smaller house to make affordable, is there anything in the laws that they shouldn't do, that they should make a compatible house to the one they're relating it to?
No, and, you know, typically it will be a moderate size so that it is affordable.
I'm talking generally, on all cases.
Yeah, I don't think there is, John.
Okay.
Just, I mean, your review does say, and Chapter 216 does speak to the fact that when you're looking at it in terms of a planned development or subdivision, that the architecture has to mimic the other homes. But for something like this, it's not necessary.
I'm not even talking. I'm just generally speaking. Okay, thank you.
Anthony, do I also recall there was some public comment about the fumes and sprays that might conceivably come across the property and?
Well, it was, the adjacent property owner who owns that business came there in opposition of the project. Started talking about the nature of his business, but, you know, was advised that, in fact, the burden of addressing that issue lies with that property owner. They're not supposed to be doing any activities that would interfere with any residential properties, so.
Right.
You know, they were sort of put on notice that if there's any sprays or anything traveling across property lines, that's not supposed to be happening. The other side is that this is going to require some relief from the zoning board, but if you look at the map, they're setting back the house, you know, pretty far back is possible, I think. So I think that, you know, we'll be away, you know, from that property as much as possible. But, yeah, we did, we did hear about that at the, at the meeting of the applicant.
Yeah, but, you know, the town doesn't want a lawsuit, I'm sure, later on after the house is built. You know, knowing upfront that this was a possibility. But I think the guy also said that he had some equipment he was supposed to.
It's still to be noted, though. It was on the record.
Yeah, I just didn't see it in here. I think, I mean, it's no big deal, but you might want to add that to the public comments.
Yes, I definitely will.
I mean, the only thing that you could possibly do is, you know, place an advisory covenant that the newly created lot is in proximity to a pre-existing non-conforming commercial use. That way a future purchaser would know that they should look into it.
God, you do know something about this. We've done it before, Phil.
Should I add something there about a potential?
Yeah, an advisory covenant for the newly created lot. What is it, Lot Two?
Yeah, that they didn't label them Lot One and Two, but it would be Lot Two adjacent to a pre-existing non-conforming.
Commercial use.
Okay. We could have that in there for sure.
Okay, with those modifications, we have a motion to adopt the pre-application report.
Motion.
Motion by Gloria.
Second.
Second by Phil. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We have six yes, one absent.
And Dennis, I just have to add one on real quick. We're going to reschedule the hearing that we have scheduled tonight for 32 South Phillips. They got to redo their, redo their mailings apparently, so they've asked me to reschedule them for February 13th.
February 13th, okay. Do we have a motion to reschedule?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, and second by Phil. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Six yes, one absent. That was a walk-on titled 33 South Phillips.
Yeah, 32 South Phillips.
32.
Sorry.
That was closed.
Good.
Thanks, Anthony.
Thanks.
Hey, Claire. Do you have applicants here? Okay.
Should be quick for everybody. Loaves and Fishes Cafe. Want number one?
Okay.
You saw this just in December. I'm not going to give the plans out for you. We're going to set the pre-submission conference for February 13th.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Robin. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Six yes.
Number two is off the agenda as well as number three.
Number three are off. Keep that up.
Yes.
What about this Hampton Country Club thing here?
That one I'm prepared to deem complete, to schedule a public hearing for February 13th. The only thing I'm holding back on is it's the one you adopted a year ago, a pre-submission report. I'll show you the plan.
Did we do SECR on that yet?
We haven't. And I would hold off on doing SECR just because we haven't gotten our referrals back from this conservation and the E.C. And the setbacks are better than the existing situation, but we want some feedback before we do SECR on this. So that's, that's what I'm recommending the applicants agree with. So this is where they're putting, they're taking a bunch of buildings and development that are adjacent to the wetlands here and will come down here. There's a couple, there's a bunch of buildings here, taking it down, putting one building that would function as their environmental maintenance yard. And you can see that it doesn't really meet the sweatland setbacks, so getting better. Initially, I have spoken to Marty about it, but it's a new application. We'd want to have like more formal feedback before we do SECR. I asked the applicant, they were agreeable to that.
So what's the action for them?
We would deem it complete, to schedule a public hearing, but then I'd be able to do the referrals and get those referrals back from the D.E.C. and.
We don't waive or start clocks or anything?
No, no. The applicant is the one, is the SECR, is someone from the applicant. He's agreeable to it. And once we get that feedback, we can do SECR immediately.
How do we do, have we deemed complete before SECR?
The applicant, so SECR is, the timeframes for SECR are the applicant's timeframes, not the town's. So you can, you can waive it, put it off until you can process it.
But we can deem it complete?
Yep, you can deem it complete.
Without the referrals?
You're going to do, you're going to do the referrals. Right.
Without SECR?
Right.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah?
I don't know.
What am I losing by doing that? What is the downside to doing that? What's the upside to doing that? I get when I'm going outside the bounds, I'd like to know why. What's the upside? What's the downside?
What we could do, the other thing we can do is we could coordinate, but we'd have to ask for a long form. And then we could formally get the two approving authorities' inputs prior to deem it complete. So that's the other thing we could do.
If you're comfortable with it.
I'm comfortable with it. It would be, again, the applicant who's the one, they're entitled to SECR before we deem it completes. And if they're willing to waive that requirement, then we can go forward.
I mean, it's a relatively simple application, right?
I mean, it's a replacement. It's been done before. There's already been a site plan application. We had conservation comments that said, recognized that there's existing development and it's getting better. But I would just like some, just in case we want to do some adjustments before we do SECR on the application. If you're comfortable with it.
Okay, so.
The applicant's here if you want to speak to him.
Joe? So our action would be then just to deem it complete?
Deem it complete, schedule a public hearing, and do referrals.
And do referrals.
Yes, and holding off, as you can see, the resolution says the applicant has agreed to hold off the SECR until we get that information for the referrals. And I cite the two referrals.
And the hearing date, February?
February 13th.
13?
Yep.
Three now, Karen?
Yep.
Okay. Do we have a motion in effect?
Motion.
Motion by Phil?
Second.
Second by Gloria. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We have six yes.
Okay, my next one then is Pon Quag Madder. This is an application, if you remember, it was 2008.
Number 14.
It's been being built on Foster Avenue. It's the condos that replaced Allen's Acres. And they're very close to being done, so I've been working with the applicant. All the landscaping's been in for multiple years, I think more than five. So they're asking.
Did ownership change?
Huh?
Did ownership change?
Not that I'm aware of. But any future things we'd ask for?
I'm going to have to accuse myself on this.
Okay. So they're asking for a waiver of the the maintenance bond requirement because the landscaping has been in for more than two years. We've done this in a couple of projects.
How's the landscaping?
Good, good. Yeah, what they're waiting for is like railings, a couple lighting things, but they've made some progress. It's almost ready.
So our action is just to modify our resolution?
To eliminate the maintenance bond requirement.
Maintenance bond, okay. Very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Phil?
Second.
Second by Gloria. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We have one abstention.
One of the keeps.
And refusal rather, and one absent.
My next one is Southampton Country Dick Camp. This is to distribute the staff report.
Staff report, all right. Is it on for the 23rd?
And I have it on for the 23rd, yes.
What is our action deadline on that?
23rd, that's why I put it on. So just for you, for informational purposes, the hearing was, the last hearing, which was closed, was in December. The action deadline is January 23rd. The public hearing comment period, because it was 30 days, is actually this weekend. So not all the public comments are in there, but I wanted, you know, you to have this information so we're not doing it all in one meeting. So you can take a look at it and review it, and the applicant too. So there's some questions, you know, that we'll go over. We'll review it on the 23rd of January. Okay?
Okay.
You can also state for the record that Claire says that our client might be willing to give you a one day extension to the 13th if you need that, obviously, based on whatever the discussion is on the contract.
That was Wayne Bluren for the.
One day?
Wait.
That would lead you to February 13th as the action deadline. So we'd have a chance on the 23rd and the 13th to redo the application, so not doing it all in one day.
Yeah, your technical deadline is the 23rd.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Your action.
I see. I thought it was the 23rd and one day would.
Which is a difference.
It was 23rd because our actual deadline is actually February 12th, the day before the meeting. Is there any action required on that?
No.
This is just distributed.
Distributed, and I will send it to Jackie too, so she has it.
So we could just, we could read it at our leisure.
Yes, so you have two weeks to read it for review.
Wow, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, gee. Thanks, Claire. Instead of two hours?
And then I have one more, which is SECR for Edgewater Motel.
Oh, Edgewater, okay.
This is our action deadline with this.
17.
The applicant has submitted a revised EAF Part One and a revised plan. Back in August, you had reviewed a revised plan which omitted the restaurants on the Eastern Parcel, the one that's adjacent to the South Valley Road.
We better share, so. Good floor. Do we have a long form?
Yep, we have a long form. The question is, you know, I want you to take a look at this, and I do have the old plans that you might want to. So you'd be doing SECR for not only yourselves, but the zoning board of appeals on this application, which I think is a pending application with the ZBA. The applicant's representatives here also.
Do you think you can speak to the changes?
Yeah.
Good afternoon, board members. Liz Vale, Alfreds, 50 Station Road, Watermill. How are you today? Happy New Year. So we amended the plan. The big change, obviously, is to get rid of the proposed commercial use of the Five South Valley Road parcel, which is the residence on the corner of Montauk Highway and South Valley Road. And also, a big change is amending, we got a traffic engineer to review the internal circulation on the site and the parking. And encourage us to change everything, which we did. The layout of the parking spaces are now diagonal. We put less spaces in the front of the existing restaurant to allow for a turnaround there, exiting and entering of just those spaces in the front. If you look, there's also an internal circulation established going from the entrance all the way through to the back between the existing restaurant and South Valley Road. So those are the big changes to address any and all traffic issues, as well as ensuring we get rid of the proposed, any potential parking on Montauk Highway and put them and accommodate all spaces on site.
So is this the two-story house as good as the brain residential?
Yes, yes. The other proposal, you may recall, for the existing motel site is to have the front be a 33-seat restaurant and the rear is the four accessory restaurant employee housing units. And that was an eight-unit hotel that's being reduced to the four units. And those restaurant employee housing units are accessory to the restaurant.
Has the ZBA indicated whether they're going to require merging for the lots?
No, and actually, you know, I did, I did talk, I think I mentioned that to the ZBA at one point, and it would really actually create a larger nonconformity on site than what currently exists because of the small nonconforming nature of these parcels and the number of uses you can have in the zoning district, the motel zoning district per square footage. I think you'd actually, if you merged them, you would create a larger nonconformity than would exist.
The host restaurant, the managers would not have an apartment there, or they would have an apartment there?
No, I mean, we don't know. It'd be, it's employee restaurant, restaurant employee housing, so it'd be dedicated to employees of the restaurants.
The restaurant's going to be a restaurant.
Yes, yes.
And this is going to be.
And the rear is housing.
Yeah, yeah. It just says existing manager's apartment.
Well, that's from the old motel.
And that'll be gone.
Yes.
Okay, just confirming that.
The idea is to mostly push the traffic out onto South Valley Road.
From the rear, yes, and that is...
Rather than everybody coming in and out on Montauk Highway.
Correct. For safety purposes, that was the recommendation of the traffic engineer. Correct.
Liz, did we discuss anything, I don't recall, about trying to discourage parking on the highway?
That is a town board matter. They did consider it at one point and chose not to pursue no parking, so. But this would certainly help.
Yeah.
I think dramatically so.
You can still recommend it if you'd like to pass the resolution, still recommend you that.
Well, I just don't know what's practical. I mean, you, you can do all kinds of things, but people will still park there, you know? You put bollards up and they'll try to squeeze between them or knock them over.
The proposed plan does accommodate all parking on site, so...
Yeah.
We're not seeking any parking waivers.
But on a summer night in July, they're still gonna park there.
If it's that popular. But there will be overflow parking, which is great on the South Valley Road parcel.
I just have a question about the left turn, because I know this, okay, coming out South Valley...
South Valley?
Yeah, if you come out South Valley or you come out onto Montauk, are both sections gonna have left-turn lanes? Because I'm just wondering whether, just a suggestion, I'm not a, uh, a traffic engineer, but it just seems to me if somebody's, if you have a lot of traffic making a left out of the Montauk exit and people trying to make a right from the South Valley, that seems to have congestion.
Like a potential conflict.
Perhaps we shouldn't allow lefts coming out onto Montauk, from the Montauk, and if you want to make a left turn, you have to go out to South Valley?
Mm-hmm.
That's an idea. I mean, we can sort of...
So we just don't have everybody...
Right. To avoid any potential conflict.
Okay. They spoke to, um, visual impact and sight distance issues.
It's because they're very close, they're very close. So I'm just picturing someone coming out onto Montauk, making a left. Somebody coming out South Valley, making a right. You've got people, and it's a very short distance there. I think maybe if we just have everybody coming out, Montauk makes rights only, and if you want to make a left, you have to come out South Valley soon.
Okay.
Or vice versa. I don't know which, but something like that.
That's reasonable. I consider that...
But if you're making a left, you're in a different lane. You're across the path.
I'm just, I'm just looking at, well, I don't...
She means like if two cars are exiting at the same time, maybe?
Same time.
Yeah.
You've got somebody making a left and somebody making a right. Yeah. Just, I would just like to look at, if you can.
Sure. We'll definitely have the traffic engineer look at that and see what they think.
Yeah, see if perhaps not having four different directions in the short area, because it's left, right, left, right, east and west from both things, and they're close together.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the site, the site going from, I know the road starts to bend.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about that, if we can...
I mean, we can address that through the traffic engineer. I'm happy to bring that up to them and see if they can analyze that for you.
Thank you.
Sure.
So there's a full traffic study with this, or not a full traffic study, but an analysis, which I think is very clear and concise. Maybe you take a look at it between now and the next meeting, and if you don't have any further questions, I'll prepare the SECRE documents for the next meeting.
But you'll have that amended?
Yes, I can have that amended, absolutely.
Thank you.
Typically, I don't think it's a SECRE. Typically, what we, on a site like this, we want some sort of signage plan, like to see what signage you have.
Okay.
Especially, for instance, patrons entering, they should, there should be signage right at the corner directing handicap parking, you know, and whatever. If we go forward with that left-hand turn, which is great, there should be signage directing eastbound traffic toward the rear.
Right, right.
Like, go east, go this way.
Right.
Because it's otherwise, it's, first of all, it's usually dark, confusing, people who've come from out of town.
Yes. Okay, we can do that.
Yeah, and there's, there's an alcohol component.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so if you're comfortable with that, we'll do that. Take a look at all the... I sent Ashley email that you drew. They...
Is the traffic, the traffic...
Not the traffic, just the part.
Really? Just EAF?
I didn't see the traffic.
So we can keep these if we come on?
We keep them.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
The traffic study I'll send you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So no action? We'll do this next, uh, next meeting, okay?
Good.
So almost done. Thank you.
All right. Natalie, you jumping in?
Yes.
People want to keep them, some. Some people want to keep them.
I think your first one is, uh...
Number eight.
North Sea General Store, number eight.
Yep. Handouts.
Was that just an extension?
That's an extension, but I have resolutions and reports. I got a couple things to go over to them.
Got you.
This is a 90-day extension for the submission of plans. Uh, this is for their handicap ramp. They're still working on getting all those plans together for us, so it'll take us to April 21st for signature.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Phil?
Second.
Second by, uh...
Laney.
Laney, all in favor? Aye opposed, abstentions? Six yes.
And then on to number 11, Brian Barrett.
Brian Barrett.
This is for reapproval. For a farm stand at the corner of 869 Flanders Road. This is Flanders Road and Flanders Boulevard.
11.
It's one of the first things I handled when I started. They have a pre-existing CO for a corner farm stand. They have filed for a building permit, but their subplans expired. They're looking to, you know, get started on building, just redoing this farm stand. This was approved in July of 2017, so this will just be a two-year reapproval so they can actually do the work.
So there, it's just a simple resolution for reapproval?
Reapproval, yeah.
Okay, very good.
What's that across the street?
That's a gas station, like repairs. It's a repair shop. Pass it all the time.
Yeah. Okay. You speak gas station, now it's just a repair shop.
Okay, do we have a motion for approval?
Motion.
Motion by Phil?
Second.
Second by Zuccarelli, all in favor? Aye opposed, abstentions? Look at the sign, like it's got P. Keith right here, doesn't it?
Do you want to wait for Steve? Now just got it.
Look at that.
And on to number 12.
12.
Marushen.
Marushen. How do you pronounce that? I'm gonna fix up stupid like, miru jim.
Yeah, we can butcher them all.
I have a draft set report in there. Draft approval prepared, so once you guys have the plans, I'll start going through it.
Well.
I do have one large set. These have been revised since the last public hearing. That's why you have a new set, but if anybody wants to see a big one, I can either bring out the easel or hold it up. It's double-sided, and it's a little small. If everybody has one, I will circle up the report.
Fire away.
Pack it. Yeah, it's double-sided. Site plan special exception for, to construct two buildings, one 5,000 square feet and one 9,950 square foot building for a special trade contractor and office used with 48 closed parking spaces. It's a 2.33 acre parcel in the HB zoning district, near a state archeologically sensitive area, the W210 median priority area at 81B, Montauk Highway. It showed on the plans prepared by Reyes Designs, which you have there. This is in West Hampton next to the, was it a Chevrolet?
It used to be the pastor, the old pastor Chevrolet.
It's an unlisted action and a negative declaration is adopted by Planes Board on October 24th. Public hearing was held on November 14th, which was closed with a 10-day written comment period. No comments were received at the public hearing or during the prescribed written comment period. We did have some that were received afterwards from two, the two residential properties to the south that about the parcel that were just concerned with the size of the rear building, visual implex and maybe noise that's gonna come from the site. Referrals, the town engineer recommended approval. They just needed a couple changes to the plans. They did approve their SWIP. They just are requesting that they reference that this is part of a subdivision. This is Beaver Lake Development Lot 3, so just to note that on the map and to provide spot elevations for all drainage structures. Public Works is withholding their approval subject to the installation of additional drainage at the Montauk Highway entrance. Fire prevention is asking for a fire zone from the Montauk Highway entrance of the property along the west and south perimeters of the paved portions of the property.
Well, that's, that's the rear building, isn't it the front?
With appropriate signage for the fire zone and just requiring that the street numbers are posted and that additional fire safety concerns can be addressed at the building stage. No comments were received from the West Hampton Beach Fire District. This was considered by the ARB on December 3rd. I do have color rendering, so you guys can see what it looks like. I know it's dark.
It's...
Sure.
I'm trying to position where the people complained, the residential...
It's these two.
These two?
Yep.
And this is where the rear building is?
Yep.
And from the elevations, they're going to be looking at those two residential houses?
Right here. There is a 50-foot conservation buffer.
That's what I was concerned about.
So you're gonna buffer?
Yeah, there's a, there's an existing 50-foot conservation buffer, which I discussed in the report. That was filed as part of the subdivision, and I am recommending that they possibly augment the buffer with some native eastern red cedar along the edge.
You know, along the edge of the parking?
Along, along the edge of the parking to further...
Yeah, I think we, yeah, take a look at that rear elevation.
Yeah. But I'll...
Okay.
No response was received from the CAC West. Suffolk County Plan Commission found this to be a matter for local determination. No comments were received from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. Site plan review in terms of setbacks, it needs all setbacks for the zone, and it has the required 50-foot transition yard for Montauk Highway. Parking, they're proposing 48 spaces, only 46 are required. Building one will generate 22 spaces and building two will generate 24. A couple of the parking spaces just show a varying, a varying width for the spaces. For improved spaces, we generally say nine by 20, so a condition of approval will be that they're all nine by 20. And then access to the site will be from a single curb cut on Montauk Highway. As part of the subdivision, they were required to have shared access with the parcel to the west, which they're showing now. The dash mark in the curb is where if the parcel to the west is developed, that's where they'll cut through to access their site. And I'm just asking as a condition of approval to note the live room page for the common driveway easement on the plans. Landscaping, site planning, a 20-foot conservation buffer along the northeastern property line as well as a 50-foot conservation buffer along the southeastern property line, which were required as part of Beaver Lake Development. Again, for this, just to reference the live room page for the covenants and restrictions, and I'm asking that the applicant stake the limits of clearing the edge of the conservation buffers before construction, so they're not encroached upon. And then to also revise the, the planting plan to include some evergreens in the first two parking islands on either side of building one. That's a smaller building in the front, just to screen the parking a little better. Now, there's two trees that are there, but if they put low-level hollies in there, it'll just break up the parking area a little bit more.
But conservation buffer, that's my, just means that you cannot...
Cannot clear it, yes.
But it's still not going to...
It's naturally vegetated.
Right. It's not gonna address the concerns of the...
Which is my next point, to include eastern red cedar along the, it would be the northern, the northern limit of the 50-foot conservation buffer.
Too long, yeah.
Yeah. To plant that out. The applicant is proposing a fence along the rear property line. You could require that they do stockade along the back to further break it up, or you know, some sort of privacy fence. And then also, go ahead.
Those properties in...
Yeah.
I'd almost say let the property owner, if they want that...
At your discretion.
The applicant, I would think a black chain link fence and then the cedars on the north side.
Cedar on the north side?
Yeah.
Okay. Then also recommending a maintenance bond for two years for the, for the plantings.
What are, what are the doors on that rear elevation? Is that, are those bays for trucks?
Yes. This is, uh, it's for proquum tennis. The inside, I believe, is special trade contracts, there's gonna be tennis court inside and just for storage, but that's the base. I mean, I have the property owner here if you have further questions once I go...
I'm just trying to address, I'm just trying to be fairly address...
Yeah, I think the best you can do is screening there.
Screening the rear, yeah.
It's the rear of the light, of the commercial, light industrial building.
Yeah.
It's not a lot of options.
To what we can do, I don't know.
Yeah.
There's a lighting plan that was provided. All pictures are 3,000 Kelvin or less.
Yeah, and that's a light, he's pulled 14.
Yeah, with 14 feet. That's the like upward limit of what's, what's allowable.
Yeah, but this, but I think we could drop a couple of feet.
Drop?
Given the proximity to residential.
To residential, but, yeah. 10?
10 or 12.
10 or 12.
Right now, they're showing 14.
Yeah.
12 would be better.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll have that. And the condition of approval will be traditional for lighting that should project downward, be shielded.
Yeah.
No lighting for that. In terms of architecture, the ARB did indicate approval, and I'm just recommending that on that front building, they add some shutters to the second floor, just to dress, you can see it from the roof, dress up the, the front building a little more.
Nice.
Actually see the colors. Yeah.
Nice color.
Yeah.
That's the...
And also, just requiring that they submit actual architectural elevations. They did give us rendering, so that'll be a condition of approval as well. Outdoor storage, they do show two outdoor storage areas that do include the required parking spaces, and there'll be a provision of additional outdoor storage without Planes Board approval as a condition. Drainage, town engineer conditions were noted, and just the recommendation that they do install that drain that the county was asking for on Montauk. They show four handicapped spaces. They only need three with one as a van accessible with. They are shown as eight by 20. Per town code, all handicap spaces are a standard size of nine by 20, and with an adjacent five-foot accessory, so they'll have to revise their plans for that. They do show the location of a sign, but didn't show, provide any sign details, so conditional approval will be all signage subject to approval of the planning board. And then this was in an architectural, sorry, an archaeological sensitive area. I don't remember if you recall the public hearing, it came up to do an archaeological report. They did, they didn't find anything on site.
Okay.
In terms of the special exception requirements...
You told us.
Yeah, so the general requirements, they do meet them. Can go through them if you'd like.
As long as they meet.
Yeah, they meet.
So you have a resolution prepared?
I do.
With the recitation, findings? Want to go to the resolve?
Sure. And go to the conditions if you'd like?
Conditions, even better.
Revised plans, just to note that this is Lot Three of the subdivision of Beaver Lake Development and note that there are covenants and restrictions on site. Revised site plan to indicate that all standard parking spaces are nine by 20 as well as to revise the handicap spaces for nine by 20 with a five-foot adjacent area. Include the compact of holly within those northern two parking islands on each side of building one. Revised planted lands to include a row of eastern red cedar along the northern edge of the existing 50-foot conservation buffer.
Do we ever say the height of the cedar that has to go in?
We can.
You should.
Can I do it, please?
10?
Yeah, we don't want...
Yeah, we don't want little cedars. If you're comfortable with 10 feet, that's fine.
Yeah, so that we get some...
Minimum height of 10 feet, I won't add that. Note that the limit of the existing buffer shall be staked prior to the issuance of the building permit. Revised building elevations, renderings to include shutters on the second floor, windows of building one, provide spot elevations for all drainage structures, include the fire zone for the requirements of the fire prevention, include the type D drain as per the county. Then as I will add the lighting to the condition.
Mm-hmm.
12 feet. The general conditions, all signage is subject to planning board review and approval. All HVAC mechanical systems shall be screened, no dusted on lighting fixtures, no additional lighting on property without planning board approval. All the lighting shall be shielded, dark sky compliant, attain all the required permits and approvals from the DPW, stake the window clearing, display the street number...
You have the lighting mod, we dropped those calls?
Yeah, I'll add that on the changes to the plan. Compliance with all the requirements of the town engineer, pre-construction meeting and prior to signature, submission of the scaled architectural elevations and revise the plans to include shutters. Notarized affidavit for compliance with the conditions and six sets of plans and then prior to COA, maintenance bond for two years. Since we've had the applicant hearing, if they have any questions? No questions?
Okay, sounds good. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, is that right?
Gloria. Second by Zuccarelli, all in favor. I oppose abstentions, we have six yes. We have passing. 13 Chris Mead. They're back. So we have a copy of the handout.
The construction permit and wetlands permit for Chris Mead was originally approved by the planning board on July 26th, 2018 to construct an agricultural barn, storage barn at 17 Neacox Bay Lane in Watermill. We did receive a modification request on September 20th to relocate the barn 78 feet further west from its approved location, which would be 198 feet from wetlands where it was previously 125 feet. So further from wetlands, but further into the field. If you look at what I handed out, I believe the first plan is the original approval and then the second plan is what they're proposing. It sort of flips the, in the basic sense, it flips the parking and the building and shifts it a little inward. Now, this is type two action, so no further environmental reviews required. A public hearing was held on November 14th, which was closed with a 10-day written comment period. One person inquired at the hearing as to where the barn was proposed to be relocated to and then we did receive some written submissions in support, not in opposition to the relocation. Referrals went out, conservation board mirrored their original comments from the original approval as to fire prevention, just asking that their original conditions were met. And then the ag advisory committee also reiterated their original opposition to this application. They don't believe there was a bona fide agricultural use, which is what they stated during their original referral.
And they're still not satisfied?
Still not satisfied. The office of the town engineer had no objection to the relocation, they're just asking that the apron is revised just to show all the materials that are being used and to note the limit of disturbance and if there's more than an acre of disturbance, that they'll be required to submit a SWIP. That is pretty much it, so I have a new, this would be to issue a new wetlands permit, which will be good for three years and then to modify the existing site plan approval to relocate that barn further west, subject to all the original conditions of approval.
Are you saying three years?
Three years.
What did the applicant say this barn is going to be used for?
Storing agriculture equipment. At the time of the original approval, they did, the applicant did submit a list of equipment that was going to be stored in the barn, which was part of the staff report for the original approval, but Wayne might want to speak to that.
The barn hasn't changed, it's just the location.
Just the location, nothing in about what's, to what I, my knowledge is.
They have an approval for the barn.
And, and repeating that they don't...
Yes.
Is that based on it?
Part of the problem was that the, if you recall, this is one of those ag reserves that for many years set fallow. In fact, my client went in there and cleared all the cedar trees and everything else and of course that caused the stir with some of the neighbors. And to get the soil back into condition, it took a couple of years and most recently, Harry Ludlow, who's the farmer nearby, has been farming the property, rotating a series of crops, primarily hay and so on. We have submitted to the record what they planned, variety of fruit trees, things of that sort. So to that extent, I can understand maybe the ag advisory committee saying, wait a minute, there isn't, you know, the chicken and the egg thing here, when is the agriculture going to happen and to justify? So it's all happening at the same time, so that's essentially why I get out of their concerns.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay.
I have a wetlands permit prepared. It'll be the general conditions. I want to add a special condition as part of the original wetlands permit, they were required to file a conservation easement. I'll just ask that they submit a copy of that filed conservation easement, so I'll add that as the third special condition.
Covenant.
Yeah, the covenant, sorry.
Is there septic involved?
Septic, yes, there is septic involved.
They're doing an IA.
As far as I know, yeah, that's what's shown.
Is that part of the wetlands permit or?
No, it's outside. The only thing that's really covered by the wetlands permit is the road goes through, is within the driveway, sorry. So, any question, I can go through the conditions.
Okay, sure.
To revise the apron detail, to provide thickness for each material, show limit of disturbance and then if it exceeds an acre, they'll be required to do a SWIP as per the engineer. Pre-construction with engineering, file notarized affidavit and then six sets of plans and this is also subject to all the original conditions of the original approval.
Okay, very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Phil?
Second.
Second by Zuccarelli, all in favor. I oppose abstentions, six yes. Set. Thank you. How do we clear the house?
They were bored today.
Do you have any, oh, you've got Flying Point.
Flying Point sign is my last one.
Oh, item 16 is acknowledged for signature, Flying Point, I'll see.
Oh, no, it's under signature?
No, no.
Oh.
Yeah, it's approval.
I didn't sign anything.
Is that your next?
That's my next one.
Sorry.
Okay, Flying Point.
This is me. Yeah, I was slow.
Me going out, Flying Point coming in.
Flying in.
If you're familiar, Flying Point Two, this is just as you leave the village on the right-hand side at 56 Flying Point Road. Claire handled the site plan. The condition of the site plan approval was that the planning board had review and approval of all signage. So at this time, we have two signs, one for organic edge, which might be the second one in your packet, and then one for Sunrise CrossFit. Organic Edge is 80 and a half inches by 40, white wood-like material. And then Sunrise CrossFit also has their phone number, Black Right, and 80 and a half inches by 24 inches. This one's of the ARB on the 17th, they have no issue with either sign. They're pretty simple, tasteful, and they're going to be located as shown.
This is the Farrell property.
Correct, the one in the back.
Okay.
They like to follow?
Yeah, they, it's, from what I've seen with the ARB, they usually do either, they limit it to a phone number or a website, usually not both, to try and keep it as simple as possible. They saw this with the phone number and didn't take issue with it.
Like a lifeguard forgetting to whistle.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
What is your...
Organic Edge is going to be a grocery store, a health food store.
I mean, the problem with phone numbers, the minute they change the number or something else happens, this sign is going to get progressively uglier.
Correct. It was, it was, the first iteration was a little busier, a lot of colors, so this is a much simpler version of that sign that you're seeing now. It also included a logo before.
Yeah, so that, I wouldn't pick it, but that's...
Beauty is in the eye of the beholder.
You're going to pick it the place already? What?
Pick it?
I mean, is that air handler going to be visible over there?
As far, if that's what the elevate, I'm not 100% sure with the elevations on the site plan. I'm merely approving the signs, but I can find out from Claire.
Okay, that's something we would have picked up on.
Maybe that's, that's why the sign looks so bad, because the air handler's in the middle of it.
Is this on CrossFit or?
Yes, it's the CrossFit one we're looking at, because the other one is, it's pretty, it's quite there.
Yeah, so recommending approval of both, subject to the applicant submitting the color information for the colors on the organic edge side.
Okay, very good. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria.
Second.
Second by Phil, all in favor. I oppose abstentions, six yes.
That's it for me. Happy New Year.
Thanks, Ben. Jackie's in the house. I will go in order, Jackie, you're...
I actually have one option here, so I'd like to go to that and I'll number 10.
Number 10, okay.
And I actually have a more updated resolution. I was on vacation the later half of last week, so.
Thanks.
Okay, so this is a three-lot subdivision at 545 Main Street in the hamlet of Klaya. Suffolk County tax note number 900-378-114. This is the final application. We did deem the application incomplete on August 8th. We got further submissions on October 1st, 2019, which is the map that you are looking at in your handout. This proposes three lots, the parcel, overall parcel is 170,022 square feet. Proposal lot one is 40,002. Proposal lot two is 40,018 square feet and the larger lot, Lot Three, is 90,002 square feet. Did receive Health Department approval on June 7th, 2019, so that will expire on June 7th, 2020. It is in the high priority water quality area, so it will have to comply with town code section 123-52. For any substantial renovations or new construction, it will have to have the IOA system. It is a type two action under SECRF, so no further environmental review is required. The three-lot plan is a reduced density plan, sorry, as the property consists of four. The town code, it's exempt from the town workforce housing because they are only proposing three and the full lot yield is four, so it would not trigger the workforce housing. It did receive multiple variances due to the existing structures and locations of the structures on the property with the zoning board appeals as well as a lot width and setbacks, so that is reference number six, I won't read that. It is consistent with the pre-application report. A final hearing was held on November 14th, 2019 with a 10-day written comment period, no comments were received or written comments were not received as well. The town analysis did state that a park fee would be appropriate. The applicant actually has paid the park fee in full at the final application stage, so that has already been paid, therefore the park requirement has been met. The pre-apper report was granted on June 8th, 2017 and as I said before, it is compliant with that report. The planning board did refer the wetlands, because there's wetlands just north, it's like northeast of the tennis court, so we did refer a 292-39B for adjacent wetlands and require that there be that vegetated buffer that is 20 foot along the north and then you can see it just kind of makes allowance for the existing tennis court to remain. There is also a flag in the town system, I did discuss this with the applicant's representative, that there is a flag that the pool barrier fence is not in good repair and basically is failing, so there is concern, just want to make sure that fence is updated prior to signature of the final plat. And also, I conducted a site visit on October 28th, 2019 and at that time, I did notice that there was a stone monument that was like a cross stone, so I was concerned. We did reach out to the applicant, just making sure that it wasn't any kind of site, but the applicant has advised us that it was just put there and nothing is actually there, but we're just asking that that be noted on the map, so that's actually on the rear yard of Lot One, so...
No bodies buried there, huh?
Yeah, and Chris Abbott is here for the applicant, if you have any questions on that. But we're just asking that that be shown in the rear yard and the location that it's located. I could see how it was missed because it was right next to like a tree and it was like cemented in there, but you know, usually a surveyor would note that, but it was very gray and it's heavily wooded, so I could see how that was missed. Fire prevention had comments from their letter dated November 8th, 2019, had standard No need for a fire hydrant or anything. We did receive comments from the assistant town engineer on October 21st, 2019, stated that the plan will need a SWIP permit and that monuments shall be noted, a three-inch drainage for all future impervious surfaces and speedy discharge permit. Common driveway, they had some comments on the common driveway plan, which I've made the applicant aware of, so they're going to revise those prior to signature, so they did not recommend engineering approval at that time. West Hampton Fire District, West Hampton Beach, sorry, Fire District, on November 6th, 2019, stated they received the request and that the Fire District Commissioners have no objections to the above request. September 11th, two, wait, I don't think that's the right date, but I think it's actually October. October 2019, the Conservation Board offered the following comments, they did state that there's town-regulated wetlands within 200 feet, those are the wetlands to the north, so 292-39B referral is required. Consistent with the planning board, sorry, the Conservation Board's comments in the spring of 2017, any trees within 24 inches. We did discuss this at the pre-application stage, we noted that most of the significant trees are along the north, which is why we established that 20-foot buffer. There are a lot of large significant escruses, so we did not ask them to be located, we just asked for that 20-foot wide buffer to the north. We're also going to be buffering the road frontage to keep the street frontage and aesthetics along Main Street. So they are noting that the recommendation along Main Street and they just asked for rewording, so the wording preferred at this time is naturally vegetated, non-disturbance nomblers. non-vegetation, sorry, non-fertilization buffer, so that's just to make sure that, you know, people know that you're not augmenting the buffer, just to remain naturally vegetated with no disturbance or no fertilization within that. They also noted the Conservation Board comments is that establishing a buffer along the northerly property line of lot three, and they just again asked for that wording to be updated to naturally vegetated non-disturbance non-fertilization buffer. So we did do a two ninety-two thirty-nine B, I sent that to them on December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, with the draft conditions, they did approve the draft conditions, so it's basically to have the buffer protect the wetlands as shown on the map, and then the standard one hundred foot setback for future structures, one fifty for future wastewater disposal, and leaders and gutters to prevent stormwater, to provide stormwater control, project limiting fencing, and contacting the Environment Division twenty-four hours in advance of any construction, and county attorney approval of any legal documents. So, we did get a resolution from the board on December eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, which basically approved the draft conditions that were sent to them on the sixteenth, and we also next did get comments from the Suffolk County Department of Economic Development and Planning on September of two thousand nineteen, and that just made the matter a local determination for the town of Suffolk. So with that, I'll just go to the conditions. Be hereby resolved, the map entitled Jackie Mauer, Prepare Five Four Carrington, prepared on August twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, oh, sorry, it's actually two thousand eighteen, last revised on March fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, and updated on August twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, is hereby approved as of January ninth, two thousand and twenty, with the following conditions, so the first one is to reword the buffer language on lot one and lot two, to have naturally vegetated non-disturbance non-fertilization buffer. Number two is to again, update the wording for the buffer on the north of lot three. Note that the stone monument is on lot one, in the rear yard, as discussed before. We just asked that the revision date, I noticed that the revision date might be missing from the one that they did in August, so just making sure that revision date is added, and obviously there are some revisions that are required as per this resolution. Compliance with town engineer comments, October twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, submission of a SWIP plan prior to signature, applicant repairing or replacing the existing pool barrier fence, and making sure its town code and state code requirements are met, that they, when I did a site inspection also, there was some like, you know, maybe like old wood, maybe like pallet or so in the buffer just to the north of the tennis court, so I'm just asking that that be removed from the buffer area. Standard requirement for all monuments around the perimeter of the subdivision to be installed or to be flagged, so that I can inspect that as well, and so I'll go and inspect, so make sure the pool fence is in good condition, make sure that the debris and rubbish has been removed from that buffer north of the tennis court, and to make sure that the monuments are installed. So with that, I just go to the covenants and restrictions. The first one is for no further subdivision of lot one and lot two, no further subdivision of lot three, which is an oversized left, unless sufficient road frontage and access can be achieved. No lot length applications without planning board approval on all lots, all new utilities shall be installed underground, no new utility poles for overhead utilities, three-instrainage for future impervious surfaces, retention of stormwater on-site, the forty-foot naturally vegetated buffer, the, I didn't put a size, I'm just referencing the map on this one, this is the northern buffer on lot three, so it'll have a revision date based upon the updates that we have asked for. Then the standard wetland setbacks for a hundred foot for future structures, one fifty for sanitary, and then installation project of aluminum fencing, and notification of the Environment Division, and then just compliance with code three thirty, three hundred, three sixty, which is for driveway safety. Submission of a common driveway easement, then title cert, mortgage consent, town attorney approval, four milers and ten prints in recording of the map.
On the common driveways, do they do maintenance agreements on those two?
It's within the easement.
It's within the easement, it doesn't have to be specific.
Yeah, they used to do it separately, but now it's all kind of in one document.
Oh, it's one, that's good.
Yeah.
Jackie, are we, are we doing all these as covenants?
Yeah.
On number seven?
Uh, which one? Yes.
Aren't these, aren't some of these just administrative conditions of wetlands construction? Do they typically get recorded as covenants?
Um, which ones are...
Like, the applicant shall notify the Environment Division, aren't those?
We normally do include that as a covenant.
You all normally do those as covenants?
Yeah, just so that people are aware that it is within wetlands and that they, it has to be in...
And it's one document, it's just different.
Okay, 'cause...
Condition within that one, C and R.
Sometimes, I mean, we get covenant heavy, it's just, I consider the important ones might get missed, because there's a whole like laundry list, a lot of these seem administrative, but if that's the way we've been doing them...
We have generally have, because it's notifying the owners that they will, any construction has to be in contact, and you have to contact the Environment Division.
Yeah, like you, compliance with town code, three hundred...
If you want to strike the driveway one, we could strike that one, but it's more like an advisory covenant, that everyone knows that they have to keep the driveways free. I mean, you could strike the driveway one, but some people aren't aware.
There's also amendments to the aprons, people are typically violating that section because of the aprons that go in, so we do like to keep that in.
Okay, I defer to you guys.
Sometimes mortgage companies are looking for the maintenance and the driveway easements.
Yeah, okay. I just didn't want stuff to get...
Yeah, the notification one is good, because then as you buy it, hopefully you're reviewing your legal documents, and you're aware that at the time of construction, because you might get all your permits and then forget to call, and basically notify them that the activity has started. The driveway one, like, you know, Catherine said, it's helpful, and it's a newer, it's a newer requirement for driveways, and also make sure that everyone's aware that you have to keep, especially with common driveways, you have to keep it wide enough, clear from gates and fences and shrubs and plain things.
So the applicant's...
Uh, yes, the applicant is Chris Abbott, he's here, if you have any questions.
Good afternoon, Christopher Abbott from the law firm Smith-Pickelstein Riverhead. I don't have anything specific to present, but I don't know if the board has any questions for us.
Pretty strict.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Okay. With no additional amendments, then we have a motion for approval?
Motion.
Motion by Wayne?
Second.
Second by Phil, all in favor, I, opposed abstentions, six yes. Thank you, Mr. Abbott.
I'm excited.
Thank you. All right, we're passing.
Next, I actually just have an extension and a signature.
This is item six?
Yes.
Item six.
So this is M four lumber holdings, the board will remember, this is the one, they had some concerns about mowing and the upkeep of the ag reserve, because it has become like a fallow field. I did do an inspection in the late summer, early fall, and just took a look, I really don't think it's like very prosperous, you know, we are having an ag reserve on this one, if you remember, this is like the L shape ag reserve that we have, that will connect to other ag reserves in the area. There are some Russian olives, but it doesn't seem cumbersome, I mean, those are invasive species, we would want them taken out of the ag reserve, so that was one of the concerns. We have reviewed all the legal documents, so I'm just really waiting for the revised subdivision map, so I can review that, but they are asking for an extension, which would give them until April seventeenth, two thousand twenty.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Phil?
Second.
Second by Zuccarelli, all in favor, I, opposed abstentions, six yes, and have you signed eight fifty-one head of pond? Is that what's mine?
Yes.
Okay, eighteen is acknowledged for signature. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
We must adjourn.
I'm here.
By Zuccarelli, second by Phil. Good job, folks, we're, when are we up in our own...